I call to order the April 30th, 2019, meeting of the Saline County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick, Commissioner Sparks-
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson-
Here.
Commissioner Weiss-
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
I ask that you join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move toward the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Dennis Benoit. I live in Geneseal, but I was born in Salina, so I really consider this my hometown. Did you need the address there, or?
That's fine.
Okay. Well, I'm here with some copies of Vaxxed, the movie. You might have heard about it, but I bet you nobody here has watched it. And especially everybody out there, they need to watch Vaxxed. What is it about? Well, it's about a whistleblower that works for the CDC. And what happened to a scientific study that he was in charge of? And that the systemic CDC, due to top-down pressure from Julie Gerberdin, who is now, was the director of the CDC, now she's working over at Merck Vaccine, they had a problem with some of the data. This was a scientific study that's supposed to be set. Well, they would, for a two-year period, Dr. William Thompson, this is the reluctant whistleblower, he, they would go into a room and have a discussion with a trash can. And any problematic data they couldn't manipulate or minimize, they would toss away. Well, Dr. William Thompson did not toss that information away of his conscience or whatever. So, I use that as an example because I believe there is a problem at the CDC. And I know the Health Department follows their schedule, and that's part of the problem, I feel. And, well, the, okay. The important thing is we're here. This is a start of discussion that I believe in our system. You are the people that these people elected, so you work for, hopefully, the people. And I feel the children have been sidelined. The vaccines are inherently dangerous, and they should be given more information. Give them the information. More than likely, you give them the V I S sheet, which is a single sheet over there at the, across the street. And that is just a feel-good. There's a vaccine insert that comes with every vaccine that you give. And that should be made available for the individuals, for the parents, so that they can be informed and have informed consent. So, this is our first day for discussion. It's a movie with a purpose. The director is Dr. Andrew Wakefield. He was very, it was part of his life, too, that was destroyed by accusations. And he goes through all that. It has immense amount of information in the outtakes. They have question and answers. They have Dr. Wakefield and Dale Bigtree, another activist, with all, all good information. So, please consider that. But I think the CDC does have a problem. And should it be reviewed? I don't know what needs to be done, but I believe this is the first step. And so, thank you. I'll, I'll give you your copy.
Why don't you leave those with the, with the administration over here, please? Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. There we go.
Wow.
Does anyone else wish to address the commission?
Good morning, commissioners. I feel incredibly fortunate-
State your name and address, please.
My name is Sheila, and I'm from Salina, Sheila Shelberg. I was at the previous town hall. Good morning. Like I said, I am very fortunate to be able to attend a meeting at 9:00 a.m. on a Tuesday morning. It strikes me rather awed that, and kind of inconsiderate, that the voted officials, you guys are comfortable with holding a meeting when most people that voted you into place are unable to attend. But that might be a whole nother grievance. Okay, I'm, I'm a citizen that cares about Salina, a mother, and most importantly, a member of the most and fastest-growing population of incarcerated individuals in America. At this time in my life, I have no hesitation mentioning that I have experienced the Saline County jail and bail system firsthand. It seems rather concerning that during April 23rd, the town hall meeting, that none of you really knew what the issue was and relied heavily on experts that may have their budget and agenda should be accepted. I mean, you guys really just relied on them to answer questions and really weren't aware of the, the issues that you guys are making decisions on. I know back in 2013 and 14, there was actually a jail reduction committee that was put in place. It involved community members. It involved some of, some of you that would probably be willing to do a little bit more research and get a little familiar with the, the issue of the jail. I could continue on, but I would just kind of prefer to bring this up as an issue with a solution that you guys could put into place. I would say that a subcommittee should be formed with members of the community, like I said, commissioners and experts who gave their opinion that is plaguing this issue with our, with our jail and the overpopulation of it. Thank you for your time. I would just wish that maybe you guys would take some time during your private sessions to think about place, putting a subcommittee in place so that people could do more research and provide you with more information rather than just building a new jail or a bigger jail. Thank you.
I will respond to one portion of that, and that is the meeting time. Over time, it has been moved around. It was held in the evening, and it had absolutely zero effect on-
Okay.
-the number of constituents that attended.
Okay.
So, thank you for your input.
Well, obviously, yeah, it's obviously hard for even commissioners to attend a meeting at this time as well, so.
Well, I can't speak for that. Does anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve today's agenda for the public forum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion does carry. Item number two.
Mental Health Month proclamation.
Good morning, and it's Mr. Cody Sparks.
I'm Cody Sparks, Clinical Director of Central Kansas Mental Health here in Salina. And Michelle Kelly is one of our supervisors. We'd like to have you consider a proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Month in Saline County. I have a copy of the proclamation if you would-
Okay, sure. We do have that, yes.
Good. So, Ms. Kelly will read the proposal to you at this time.
Okay. A proclamation declaring May as Mental Health Month 2019, whereas the mental health of every citizen is essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses in the Saline County community. And whereas, mental health is a key component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being. And whereas, mental health affects people of all ages, races, ethnicities, and income levels in Saline County. And whereas, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for Kansans aged 10 to 34. Whereas, mental health conditions are not only common, they are treatable, and early and effective intervention can save lives. And whereas, only 50% of individuals with a serious form of mental illness seek treatment. And whereas, untreated mental illness leads to higher rates of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, and suicides. And whereas, we strive to create a Saline County community that supports mental health by increasing access to treatment, educating ourselves and our communities about mental health and mental illness, and supporting our citizens as they seek to improve their mental health. And whereas, greater public awareness about mental health can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, making it easier for our citizens to seek help for a mental health issue.
All right, thank you. Do you have any activities associated with, with this Mental Health Month?
Yes, we have an open house.
Speaking on the microphone, they can hear you at home.
Yeah, we have an open house on the 9th of May. It's chamber-based. We have that. That was about it for, for our regular program, and then just our regular programming.
Okay, well, thank you. We, we appreciate your hard work at the, the mental health and carry on the good work.
We have an official form that you could sign if you chose to.
Okay, we do have a proclamation that's signed. I don't know if it's the same.
There you go. No, you have the better version.
Okay. Well, if you'd like to, I'll come forward, I'll present that to you.
Make a motion here.
Oh, excuse me, let's, let's approve it, and then we'll, then we'll present the proclamation. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare May 2019 as Mental Health Month.
Second the motion.
It's been moved in seconds that we declare May 2019 as Mental Health Month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, the motion does carry. Now I'll present the proclamation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Cody.
Good job.
All right, we'll move to item number three.
Idle Fund Report, Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners. Well, I got more good news to tell you. I hope that the, this is the first quarter of the Idle Fund Report for 2019. If you look three-quarters way down the page, we had earned this quarter $250,937 compared to last year, which was $110,531.17. So, we had a net gain of $140,405. The good part about that is, I think I told you several times, that I don't know that we'll ever reach that million-dollar mark. If interest rates remain good, the economy remains good, we might just pull that off at the end of the year. So, cross your fingers for doing exceptionally well. Our money market at our bank is, is right now, it's making 2.2%, which is phenomenal for us. And the average of our CD rates is around 2.0 and higher. So, having said that, I'll stand for questions.
I agree with you. That is good information, good, good news. And the trend is working in our favor there in this particular case. So, comments from other commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
All right, Jim, thanks for the update.
Keep your duck for another quarter. Thank you, commissioners.
We'll move to item number four.
RFA Number 142-19, Webster Conference Center Fireworks Display, Bernie Botson, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Bernie.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
We have requests from Mr. Lonnie Morris has applied for a license to provide private fireworks display at Webster Conference Center located at 2601 North Ohio Street on Saturday, May 26th at approximately 9:45 p.m. or when it gets dark. And it's a consumer-grade application, meaning it's the normal fireworks that you could purchase at a fireworks stand if it were in that timeframe. This falls out of that timeframe, and that's why we're, we're doing the fireworks permit. I've checked with Chief Comark, the fire chief, for that jurisdiction. He doesn't have a problem with it. Mr. Morris has presented the proper insurance and licensing documentation for your review.
What, just to be nosy, what's, what's the occasion?
I believe it's a wedding.
Okay. Are there questions from commissioners? I think, I think Mr. Morris has, has applied before.
Yes, sir.
And so, the, the emergency preparedness is dealt with, with him and his group.
Yes, sir. And he had all the proper paperwork and licensing and all, and, you know, that. And I got permission, written permission from Bill Cook, who is the manager of Webster Conference Center. He's also signed off on that.
Sounds like all the i's and t's have been dotted and crossed. So, further comments or questions from the commissioners? Is there any public comment?
Good morning, Salina. I assume that they're paying a hefty fee for this permit because there is a danger required. Anybody else that shoots off fireworks commercially, you have to pay a permit. So, I would suggest maybe about a $1,500 permit fee.
Thank you for the suggestion. Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing then, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the private fireworks display at Webster Conference Center on May 26th as required.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 142-19 Webster Conference Center fireworks display. Is there any further comments, questions? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, the motion does carry. Item number five.
County Engineers Update, Justin Mater, County Engineer.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning. So, here this morning, I gave you just kind of an update on the projects that I've been working on. The majority of them have been bid out to and are under contract currently. So, you have a map in front of you, as well as a, a map on the projector up there of an update from what I presented to you, as you know, several months ago, with more of a, a final map of all the projects that we're going to try to complete this year. So, the report that's in front of you as well, I tried to keep it simple and, and broke it down into each type of project. So, I'll just start at the top with, we do have a couple reinforced concrete box projects that still have not been completed yet. There's a project on Reese Road that the Reese Construction is under contract to complete those projects. We'll begin that project around the 1st of August, as well as a reinforced concrete box project on Honig Road. And that'll start around the 1st of September. And the contractor is fairly confident that those, both of those projects will be opened up by Thanksgiving of this year. So, and that should complete all of the, the 2018 contracts. So, then, starting with the 2019 contracts, I'll start off with our span bridge projects. And on the map, there is a, I'm going to try to keep this out of your eye, Andrew. They're right there. Boy, I'm shaky. There's a span, 100-foot reinforced concrete haunt slab span project on Waterwell Road. L and M Contractors is under contract to complete that project and will begin, you know, a late summer is about the best he could give me right now, so, you know, probably around that August timeframe, with a six-month-long project. And the project is going to be just a little short of $316,000 for that project. For our 2019 reinforced concrete box projects on the map, those are the blue circles in front of you. I, I just started working on those plans, reviewing those plans, and trying to get those ready to go. So, hopefully, we'll have those ready to go, to go out for bid here in the next month or two. So, we don't, so those are not under contract. And I've, I won't go down the entire list, but I did, on my report, list each one of those projects there. Next is the pavement crack seal. Those, that is on the map, that is the dark blue line. And Saline County's under contract with Payment Pros LLC for $95,732. And they were the only bid, and so what we, we allowed a little bit of flexibility on the timeframe to get that done. And so, there's three projects, the Holmes Road, Fallen Road, and Cloud Street. We allowed them to, we wanted to get those done before harvest because those roads will also be chip sealed. And so, we wanted to just, for the scheduling to work out, those need to be done first. All the other roads that are the dark blue line, we're going to allow them to crack seal after the wheat harvest.
Well, in your, in your comments here, it says beginning June the 5th. That's the beginning of harvest.
Correct. And what we did is there's, there's run, that's a little misleading because we, I had a conversation with him about that. And, let me turn to the back sheet here. The Fallen Road, what we're going to allow them to do, so there's three roads, you know, that's, that needs to be done before harvest. Fallen Road is probably going to be the most impacted by harvest of those three locations. And so, what we're going to do is we're going to allow them to work on some Saturdays in May in order to get that road done. Okay? And then, so when they, then they'll have just the two roads left, starting, beginning of June. And it should take them, they're estimating, estimating anywhere from three to five days to get those done. Those last two roads that we want to get done before harvest. And so, hopefully, that, that shouldn't have any, we should get those two roads before harvest. That's the plan right now. That's, that's the best that they can, they can do right now.
I'm really leery of that, Justin. I mean, Holmes Road is no doubt a main thoroughfare going to the, to the Salina elevators.
Right, you know.
I don't know so much about the Cloud Street, which, where that's at, but.
Yeah, and as time gets closer, because our biggest issue, well, there's, there's two issues that we're trying to accomplish. Number one, not to have work done during wheat harvest. And number two, to try to have the crack seal done before the, the, the chip seal projects start. And so, the chip seal projects are, you know, they're, they're going to be starting here, and I was next on my line, around mid-July. And so, kind of depend on how, you know, if, if harvest is going to be late, we should be okay. If harvest is going to be early this year, you know, we, we, we were not going to, we told them right away, you know, that you will not be allowed to be on the road when wheat harvest starts. And wheat harvest starts when I say it starts, as far as they're concerned. They've got to be off the road. So, if it's early, we might be able to sneak them in after wheat harvest and before the chip seal guys show up. So, we're just going to have to kind of play it, play it by ear when it gets a little bit closer.
The ball's going to be in your court because-
Yes. Oh, I understand that.
I mean, you know, three summers in a row, I fielded questions about closing roads or road projects on, on main thoroughfares going to the elevator. So, I don't, I don't want to have those calls again this summer.
Sure, no, and, yeah. And what really helps is, you know, we're, we're talking about three to five days of construction, which is relatively short timeframe, and that's split up between two projects. You know, and so, it's, it's, the, the duration that we're going to have construction for the crack seal is relatively short. And I think we can, you can squeeze that in either before or after, so. But I made it very, very clear, and it's actually in the contracts, that they will not work during wheat harvest, so.
Okay.
And Justin?
Yes.
Typical crack sealing is a mobile operation.
Yes.
And there's still going to be traffic going in and around.
No.
They are going to be closed.
Not in and around. It's, and we're not closing the road. It's going to be done by pilot car. Okay, so, right, because we don't want to be having the traffic driving over the fresh, soft crack material and tracking that. And so, they'll have to follow the pavement, or, I'm sorry, the, the pilot car to make sure they, they stay off of that material. So, but it'll be, the roads will be open the entire time. And on, and on occasion, when it makes sense, I will let them use a flagger instead of a pilot car, too.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving on down to the chip seal, and that is the green line on the map. Saline County's under contract with Circle C Pavement and Construction for $773,319.38. And as I mentioned just a little bit ago, that their estimated construction time to start is going to be around, you know, mid-July. You know, and by contract, though, they, they can, they're going to start by mid-July, and they have to be done by September 27th. And that, that's when they, and it's really more of a weather constraint than anything on that. We did make one change, significant change, from the, the map before that I presented a couple of months ago on my last quarterly report. We had Niles Road receiving a chip seal as well. But after, you know, you go through the, the full winter, what we did is we decided to exchange those five miles on Niles Road to the, to the, the south five miles of Burma Road. And we felt that Burma Road is really starting to, to need a lot of patching and a lot of work, and we need to get that one chip sealed before, before, really, we lose the road. So, and we didn't feel like we, we had the budget to add five miles, and so, we had to find five miles to exchange. So, that was, that was kind of one significant change we had from our plan before. Moving on to our, by two minutes, patching and overlay, is their hot mix asphalt. That is the light blue line on the map. And Saline County's under contract with APEC Kansas for $1,419,462.50. APEC's anticipated to start work, they'll, they'll be starting with the patching around the 1st of August. And then, by contract, all of the asphalt work has to be completed by October 11th. And the shouldering, which is all in the same contract, will need to be completed by November 30th of this year. Again, we do have a memo of understanding with the City of Salina for Country Club Road, and that is to make sure that we, we, all of Country Club Road within city limits will be under our contract to make sure that, you know, we, we complete a road all the way to Eastborough. And so, we have that MOU signed and approved, and it's ready to go.
Eastborough, from where? Holmes Road or Simpson or where?
That is from, you're going to go, we're going to go from Simpson to, to Eastborough is where that is, so.
And you might give us a little bit of an update for the public's information regarding the railroad crossing at Schooler Elevator? Has there been any further?
Yes, so, there, there's been a new contact with the railroad on that. And I called him- Yes, so there's been a new contact with the railroad on that, and I called him last week, and the railroad has put in a project, so, okay, so there's two, actually two railroad crossings at that location by the Schooler Elevator. The railroad owns the east track, and the elevator owns the west track, so the west track is a private crossing, and so the railroad's definitely going to put in a project to replace their crossing, and they are going to work with the elevator to see if they can eliminate that west crossing, the west railroad tracks, which is also, there's a switch in there, so you've got a little more moving parts within the roadway, and it makes it a little more complicated trying to have a good crossing in through there, so that project is moving forward. There's a brand-new contact for us, and he's been on the job a week and a half now, so he's still trying to get a feel for everything, but I made sure that he is, you know, he's aware of the project, he knows it's coming, and so hopefully that'll be done sometime this year. He wasn't real sure on the timeframe when that's going to happen. He was going to look into it and have the railroad, someone else a little higher up in the railroad to give me a call on some details.
Well, I hope you continue to push that button. The squeaky wheel gets greased, you know, as they say, so continue to do that. I mentioned this to you in private, but I want the public to know that we're also aware of the railroad crossing at the corner of Simpson and Old Forty, which is a fairly new crossing, but the concrete's chipping away at a fairly high rate, and the rebar's actually coming up through the crossing, so it's something we need to make the railroad aware of if they aren't already, so.
Yeah, I'll give them a call. You know, like I said, they don't, I mean, just kind of like us, the road and bridge, we don't drive every road every day.
Right.
And so we kind of depend on the public to let us know some of our problems, and so I'm assuming the railroad's, I'm hoping the railroad's going to have that same attitude, and we'll go take a look at it.
In this case, I'm Mr. Public, because I've been driving over that thing, and you look, see where those steel rebars are coming up through there, and, you know, it's going to cost somebody a tire pretty quickly.
Yeah, okay, yep. I'll, yeah, I'll get in touch with them.
Thank you.
The next item on my list for an update is the road improvement projects by contract, and so I'm working on, there's two projects that we've talked about this year, and the first one is Waterwell Road from Burma to Lightville. Those plans, the original plans have included a prime and double seal, as well as some grading and, you know, and other items on the project. Those plans are pretty well complete, but we're, I would like to have a discussion with you guys about some other surfacing alternatives that we might want to consider, so we're going to talk about that at a study session here later on today about that. And then the other one is Simpson Road from Waterwell to Magnolia, and that has a lot of the same issues, and I think it's, I haven't started on that project yet, but the talk on Waterwell, I feel, will give me a little more direction on Simpson Road. So that's as far as we have as contract work, and so I did give you just a summary of some of the materials that we bid out this year, and we purchased, and for traffic paint, we purchased $61,685 from Enos Flint Paint for the actual traffic paint. The beads that you drop on top of the paint, we purchased from Potter's Industry for $12,680. Roadway aggregates and hauling, those projects have been bid out. I won't go down each one of them, but you've got listed each of the road materials there and who we're purchasing from. And then finally, the culvert pipe, we purchased from Wellborn Sales for $45,975.70. I do have some other miscellaneous projects, as most of these are, you know, as time allows, you know, that I've listed there, but we are doing the bridge, buying new bridge inspections every two years. We have to look at all bridge linked structures, and those are the structures 20 feet or longer. The fieldwork is done on that, and we're just waiting for KDOT to open up the web portal to put in that data. The good news is that we have not found any significant structural deterioration from the last two years, you know, so, which is always good. No surprises on our bridge inspections. So, okay, so the last page of my report, what I just, I'm not going to go down each one of those, because I'm, be repeating a lot of the information, but I tried to give you just a summary of the contract schedules, all on one page, very simple, to where you can look at and find when the contractors are, they're thinking they're going to start right now, you know, so, but I do want to make it very, very clear that this is their estimate on their start dates. You know, each one of these contracts, they have a timeframe, and so this date that I'm providing on here is their best guess as of, you know, last week, end of last week, and so that can change at any time.
All right, just keep us informed of those types of issues, and appreciate it. The map that you provided us with is very concise and appropriate, color-coded, to where we can understand, or at least I can. I'm sure the others are way ahead of me on that, but nonetheless, it is very helpful to get it in this manner, so.
Okay, good.
Thank you for all of your updates. Any other questions or comments from commissioners to Mr. Mater? Seeing then, that concludes our agenda items for today. Is there any other business or announcements that anyone wishes to make?
I will announce that I attended the meeting at the Senior Service Center, also that same evening. Commissioners helped serve dinner to the, appreciation dinner to all the workers who worked the Meals on Wheels. I don't know a count, it was over 200.
Probably.
It was a full house, and a lot of chicken was doled out. Also, I had the opportunity to attend a show and tell at the Reno County Jail with Sheriff Solden, and I was quite impressed with the operation and the programs that are in place in Reno County and ways that they are trying to reduce their population, so do know that the commissioners are, do have their ear to the ground, they are receptive to ideas and things that are happening.
All right, thank you. I'll also announce that Administrator Manley and I attended the Chamber of Commerce up briefing last Wednesday. It was the county's turn to present their briefing for the semi-annual or quarterly, whichever they decide over there that they want us to, and Andrew did present that and did a nice job, and we pretty well let him know what's going on right now within the county and things that are on the front burner and things that we've accomplished, so that was a good job by Mr. Manley. We will follow this meeting with a study session meeting that is open to the public after a short break in this meeting, so with that, I will take a motion for adjournment. Roger, we've already, I'm sorry, we've already had the public forum. That was closed several minutes ago. I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll make an exception this time. I don't know when you came in, but go ahead and.
I'm probably lost and misinformed. I understood.
Please state your name and your address.
Sorry, Dowd in Minneapolis, Kansas, but I understood there was a road closing was going to come to the commissioners as far as closing the road in Saline County.
What I would do is, I would ask you to ask our county engineer or our road and bridge person after this meeting, and they can update you on any of those types of issues that are coming forward. So if one of you would get with him after this meeting, I'd appreciate that. Thank you. So I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. We adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried.